I'd like to call this meeting to order Thursday, August 5th. I'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones and if you'd like to speak on any item, please fill out a blue slip and bring it up to one of our staff. We'll begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Smith.
Every head bow, every eye close, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. We thank you, Lord, for the gift of life. Thank you for everyone who is gathered in this room. Thank you for opening doors for us to chance to discuss the issues that impact southwest Louisiana. Protect us from beginning to end. Also, Lord, open our hearts and minds so that we will be able to do your will. We thank you, Lord, very much in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Roll call, please, Ms. Cathy.
Yes, sir. Mr. Andrew Pott.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mr. Barti.
Here.
Vice President Brain.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Burley.
Here.
Mr. Gilery.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Landry is running a little late. Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markantell.
Here.
Mr. Rishard was unable to attend this evening. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stelly.
Here.
Mr. Tremonti.
Here.
And President Abshire.
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to remind all the jurors with our masks on, would you please speak loud and clearly for the microphone? And also, when making a motion in a second, please raise your hand. So, thank you. Item four, presentation of a certificate to Mr. Ronnie Harvey Jr. in honor and recognition of being named the 2022 Louisiana High School Principal of the Year. Mr. Smith.
This is definitely an honor. Mr. Harvey, Principal Harvey, he's also an actual graduate of Washington Marion. He left and went off to school, University of Louisiana, and graduated and came back to teach at Washington Marion and also coach. Like I say, he did his time in the classroom administration and he was able to come back and now he's the principal, been there for like two or three years. And in his time there, he came in and turned the school completely around. It was labeled as an actual low-performing school and last year, or year before last, it attained the actual B rating and that's pretty good. And like I say, he's definitely a hard-working person. He's always there. Like I say, when I go home from work at night or whatever, he's at the school. I get up in the morning and bring my little boy to school, he's there. So, eight o'clock at night, he's there, seven-thirty in the morning, he's there. So, he definitely put in the work. And I guess with his hard work and dedication to the community, you know, he's definitely a product of Norfle Charles. And I guess, you know, with all that in mind, the state of Louisiana has awarded him 2022 Louisiana High School Principal of the Year of the whole state, of the whole state of Louisiana. So, I want to bring Mr. Harvey up and present him with the actual certificate of recognition. And I'm gonna go ahead and read it to you. Basically, what it says, "Certificate of Recognition Presented by Calquishu Parish Police Jury on its fifth date of August 2021, Ronnie Harvey Jr., Principal, Washington Marion Magin High School, in honor of recognition of being named 2022 Louisiana High School Principal of the Year by the Dream Teachers. Thank you for outstanding leadership, commitment, and compassion, and congratulations on a job well done." Chris LaHaw.
I just want to thank everyone for having me on today. I'd like to definitely thank Mr. Smith for this award and recognizing me being a representative in your district. Man, I really appreciate the job you're doing, but it's not just Mr. Smith, everybody on this panel. We really truly appreciate you all and on behalf of Washington Marion, we really do. I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Best of luck. Item four, presentat-- item five, presentation of a comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended December 31st, 2020. Ms. Buffkin.
We're pleased to present tonight the comprehensive annual financial report for the police jury and all its component units for the year 12/31/2020. Tonight, we have Jason Gilery, our auditor. He's from McElroy, Quirk, and Birch, and he would like to hit some high points of the financials.
Just want to make a brief presentation on the financial report under your full agenda tonight. Let me begin by saying that the financial report consists of two documents. Hopefully, you've received both of those. The first is a large white document called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and then there's a smaller green document, that's the Compliance Report. Primarily going to be referring to this large white document, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So, the purpose of an audit is to express an opinion on the financial statements, and we have done so on the, on page one of the financial section of the comprehensive financial report. We have issued an unmodified opinion, in which means that we believe that your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, that's basically what we hope to achieve. At the, by every audit we do, we hope to be able to issue an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. And so, that is really my contribution to the comprehensive annual financial report. I'm gonna take a little bit of credit for everything that Tammy and her staff has done with the rest of this report, which is quite an undertaking to put together. The first thing that I do want to draw everyone's attention to is within the introductory section, there's an introductory section tab at the beginning of the report on page XI. You will find the, a copy of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting as awarded by the GFOA for December 31st, 2019. So, every year, the police jury submits its comprehensive annual financial report to the GFOA for their certificate program, and we will do so again this year with the current report. We expect that we will receive the certificate again next for the 2020 financial report, and that will be the 30th consecutive year which the police jury has received that certificate, which is quite an accomplishment and an attestation to the staff of the Finance Department now and in the past. And so, you are all to be commended for that. The next thing that I'd like to draw your attention to is within the financial section immediately following our report on page five, and that is the Management's Discussion and Analysis, which is also referred back to as the MDNA. Maybe the most important paragraph in this entire report is the second paragraph of this MDNA. And the reason is because this paragraph puts this entire report in context for whoever's going to pick this up, report up and read it. You know, you guys read it as the governing board and maybe somebody in our area will read this, but there will be people all over the country who will read this for one reason or another, and they won't be aware of everything that's happened to the Calquishu Parish. And so, in the first paragraph, we, it is stated about the effects that we've dealt with, with the COVID-19 pandemic, which occurred through, which is still occurring and it occurred throughout 2020, but also the two major hurricanes, Laura and Delta, which affected our area. So, that gives the reader some context for which the financial statements that they're looking on. And as you look at the financial statements, they do look a lot different than normal, than what we would normally see, directly because of primarily the hurricanes. We incurred, or the parish incurred $115 million of debris removal expenses as a result of hurricane recovery. Because of accounting rules of when you receive money, the revenues that we expect to receive as reimbursement for a large percentage of those funds, we believe that will be reimbursed at 90% or $100 million of that $115 million. That money has not been able to be recorded in the 2020 financial statements. They'll be recorded in subsequent periods when those funds are readily available to the parish. So, when you look at the financial statements for the current year, you will see a lot of expenses associated with the hurricane, but very little revenues. What we expect to happen is that in 2021 and in 2022, those FEMA funds and insurance proceeds will come, come to the parish and we will show the surpluses that will counterbalance any deficits which we, which occur during 2020. Another point that I'd like to make is, for example, I believe the only disaster recovery revenue that we recorded on the 2020 financial statements was $15 million of insurance recovery, of insurance proceeds. So, in the context of this, this $100 million of FEMA funds and more than that, that's really just associated with debris removal. So, obviously, there's gonna be a lot of activity and a lot of revenue to be recorded in future periods. So, just trying to put that in the context for anybody who picks up these financial statements, because there, the condition is, we have more expenses than we have revenues for the first time in probably forever in a lot of these funds, but they're directly a result of what we went through in the fall of 2020. So, as a result of these items, the net position, which if you're a businessperson, you might think of this as retained earnings, decreased by $43.7 million, which is a significant decrease. Also, as a result of the COVID pandemic, you know, we saw some specific effects on the financial statements. We saw decreased sales taxes, we saw decreased gaming revenues, but we did receive CARES Act grants associated with those. So, you had a small impact that was, that was further mitigated by grant funding. On the hurricane side, obviously, not as much mitigation has taken place so far, so we had an increase in public works expenditures alone of over $100 million over last year. So, that was, that's really the most significant aspect of these financial statements. So, as a result of the debris removal and other hurricane recovery expenditures, the Public Works Operating Fund reported a negative fund balance of $37.7 million. So, that's kind of what I'm talking about, you know, your retained earnings for your business would have gone negative, but we expect that retained earnings to fully recover next year as the future grant funds are received by the parish. But just want to put some of those lost, some of those items kind of stick out. We want to make sure we're putting those in the proper context that, just like our houses are all in disrepair and our repairs are extending into future periods and we're gonna receive further insurance money in future periods, the parish is in the same situation, or hopefully, we're still in the same situation of receiving grant funds in future periods, and that, and just accounting rules are keeping us from really matching up dollar-for-dollar the expenses with the revenues that we hope to be reimbursed for. Another result of the hurricane is that the police jury reported a new major fund, which is a classification based on the size of certain balances within those funds, and that new major fund is the Disaster Recovery Capital Fund. It was established in 2020 to account for all major repairs and remediation expenditures as a result of hurricanes Laura and Delta, as well as the insurance proceeds to cover such costs. And as noted earlier, currently, only about $15 million of insurance proceeds has been recognized in that fund. But we do expect those to be recognized in subsequent years. It's also noted on page 17 of the MDNA, which is the last, the last section of the Management's Discussion and Analysis, where the management gives an outlook toward 2021, and it notes that, to the date of this report, about $57 million of FEMA funds had been received associated with the debris removal. And talking to Tammy before the meeting, we were now up to almost $60 million of FEMA funds. So, we're making progress toward that estimated $100 million of FEMA reimbursements associated with debris, primarily debris removal. So, that's really the main points on the financial report that I wanted to bring out. We, like I said, as I mentioned, there is a second report, this green Compliance Report. So, within this report, we issue two separate reports. One deals with the internal control and the, and the compliance with laws and regulations for the parish itself. We also issue a separate report on how well the police jury's internal control has functioned and it has complied with federal money. So, this is a special section called a single audit, which deals strictly with federal expenditures. And all of that is included in the green report. We've issued no findings, either internal control or compliance findings, that are specific to the primary government. So, for the police jury itself, we had no current year findings for, on either of those counts. So, in closing, obviously, 2020 was a year like no other, and the police jury, you guys, and the finance staff, you're really to be commended for your efforts and your resiliency to tackle and manage this unprecedented set of circumstances. And I want to thank Tammy and her staff for all of their diligent efforts of, you know, really fighting hard to get this report out on time and accurate with all of the new changes and new grants and the issues of dealing with FEMA. It's really been a Herculean task for their, their department, and Tammy and her crew do a great job, and they assist us wonderfully for the audit. So, I just want to thank you, Tammy. And with that, I'll open up for any, any questions the jurors may have.
Thank you, sir. I do believe we have a question from Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. You did have two findings from the Special Service Districts, one being from the Waterworks District, number 14 of Ward Five, and another one from Waterworks District 12 of Ward Three. I think I may remember the Ward Five, because I think that's an ongoing problem, but if you could, in maybe two sentences or less, give us a little update on exactly what that is, so we're all aware of what's going on.
And you're referring to the segregation of duties finding on page 49?
Is it in Ward Five, they don't have enough employees?
Yes, exactly. Both of, both of those component units have been taken over administratively within the umbrella of our reporting entity, but there's only one person in the office in one of the entities, and I think maybe two in the other. So, you don't have proper, they have been incorporated within the parish's overall larger accounting system, like they report funds back to their second-floor office, but within their individual location, there's, you know, there's not enough segregation for the cash-receiving, cash-dispersing opportunities.
And not that there's an issue, but still.
No, it's just, it's a nature of the entity finding.
Well, if we consolidated the Waterworks Districts, we wouldn't have that problem. Would you agree with that statement?
If you had one, one properly segregated.
Or even the East West or better. Let's just get crazy and say, maybe a district-wide, we can even go into Bogart and Cameron Parish and just have a, that is how they do it in Texas, not that I, you know, I'm not from Texas and I'm not saying that their ways are better, but, you know, you find a lot of efficiencies whenever you do that, that way. And they're not the only ones. A lot of places in the country do that. They don't just randomly get on a map and draw out a little district and, hey, here we go, we got a water district.
Yeah, the larger, it's inherent to a small staff. If you had a, any organization with a larger staff would have the opportunity to have proper segregation of duties.
And now, what about, of course, that Waterworks District 12 of Ward Three's been taken over by the police jury, serves as the board now, but what is the issue there?
I'm sorry. Oh, that was with some sales tax reports that were, that were not being filed timely. They were waiting on information to come to make the final sales tax submission.
And that was when the board was running the district?
That, that's been, that was ongoing in both 2019 and 2020, but it has been corrected for the second half of 2020.
Right. Well, now, the police jury should be doing all the financials for that, isn't that correct?
Well, it's not really financials, it's sales tax, specifically sales tax reporting.
I could do the sales tax. I do mine every month. It's not that complicated. Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Any other, Mr.?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your report in, in reference to Mr. Landry's first epiphany. I vote that we, I vote that we kick one anthill at a time. Thank you, sir.
That was.
That's it.
What you had to say.
That's what I had to say. I ain't even, I'm not even going.
Are we all wiser or dumber? I don't know.
I'm not sure either.
Any other questions?
He's just wanting to get into some.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Thank you, sir. Item six, consideration of adopting an order to approve the following zoning application, 7700 block of Highway 397 in Ward Three. Rezone from agricultural to light industrial to allow industrial development.
Move to discuss.
Thank you.
We have a motion to discuss. I believe we have some persons to speak. Mr. Gabb, will you lay the groundwork for us?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I was able to speak to both sides, for and against, on this issue, and the persons who are gonna make comments to you today have agreed to both sides sharing no more than 10 minutes on each side, and I've got their, they've got a spokesperson from each side who's gonna take majority of the time, but I will keep those times.
Okay. Thank you, sir. First, we have with us Mr. Robert Gale. Will you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm Robert O'Gale. I'm president of Oak and A1 Ranch Incorporated. We, our family name is not part of the ranch name, it's our brand. So, I felt we needed to put some faces behind the name of the corporation that is on record, of course, the applicant, but technically, the developer. The family is here on the second row. In, in 1891, Arthur Gale Sr. came as a nine-year-old boy from Pointe Capie Parish on a steamboat and a railroad to Lake Charles to live with his uncle, who was sent by his parents. And at age 14, he got a job at the Palace Grocery as potato bag boy, and that is exactly what he did, I'm sure, for Mr. Weber, and later was joined by George M. King. Mr. Weber is Willis Robert Nannett's great-grandfather, Nannett Nolan's great-grandfather, and George M. King is Bill and Alvin King and the King family' great-grandfather. Granddad worked for the, their organization for 70 years, his entire life. When he died at 84, he'd gone from potato bag boy to chairman of about six or eight corporations that Mr. Weber and King started. Because he had a good job during the Depression and with a wholesale grocery business of Kelly Weber and Company, the family won't starve, and he was, had the funds to start to buy land. His hobby was cattle. He served seven years President Louisiana Cattlemen Association, and that's why these lands were acquired some 97 years ago. We've been quietly growing rice on those lands and always been good stewards of those lands. If you draw a circle around the site in question here, I think we own more acreage outside the proposed rezoning than any others, and we would never want to do anything on that site that would be harmful to our surrounding lands, and our dream has never been to leave our heirs an industrial zone site. We're fine with it at some point going back to agriculture, even. And I'll let the rest, I appreciate it, Mr. Polrowski and Dr. Maloney.
Thank you. Mr. Polrowski. Mr. Maloney, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Dr. Soren Maloney. My address is 750 Town and Country Boulevard. I am the project engineer with direct responsibility for the compression facility that we are hoping to place on the A1 Ranch's property on, on Highway 397. So, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. President, members of the, of the jury for the opportunity to address you this afternoon. I also have with me here our vice president of engineering, Mr. David Stevenson. So, first, first of all, I want to extend my apologies for the misunderstanding around the planning and zoning process that our colleagues came to earlier this month, I think last, this month actually, on, on the 20th. Now, I've, I've been intimately involved with this project since early this year, and I believe this project is in the right place, it's the right project, and it's, it's in the right parish, and I'll explain why I'm saying this. So, with respect to opposition in this matter and the zoning application, I believe it's appropriate and beneficial to Calquishu Parish, and I want to highlight a few, a few things. So, first of all, I want to briefly say what Satara's does. So, so what we do as a company, we take gas from a pipeline, we put it, we transfer that gas into, into cylinders that are on trailers, and we take that gas to customers that don't have the benefit of being next to a pipeline, or customers that, for instance, suffered a disruption in most emergency scenarios, like hurricane or a storm, and, and we can take that gas to, to these customers, right? So, that's, that's what we do. Now, in order to, in order to do that, in order to pick a site to do that, there's a number of things that go into picking, selecting a location to do that. And remember, I just said, we have trailers. We need the ability to get into a site very safely to and from the site that we are loading these, these trailers. And I've been all over Calquishu Parish into Cameroon Parish, as far, almost as, as the Gulf looking at sites. Now, some of these sites are in very low-lying areas. I've actually been to sites that are actually in the water, so we couldn't even get trucks to go in there to fill up. These sites would not have been suitable, and a lot of these sites, to access them, they're, they're weak bridges in a lot of the southern parts of, of the parish. So, we could, so a lot, we looked at a lot of sites with the gas supplier N-Link, and we, the site we ended up focusing on is the one that we're discussing here today. There's some other, other things that we look at. We look at the pipeline pressure, we look at the location of the site in relation to, to our customers, because of course, we want to be, we want to have a reasonable amount of distance. Usually, our sweet spot is about 150, 50 miles or so from our site to, to the customer. So, those are some of the things we look at, and it's a very method, method, methodic approach in how we go about doing that. So, we did arrive at this location, like, by throwing darts and see, let's see where it ends up with. It's a very, very detailed, systematic way of looking for a location.
A two minutes.
Some, some, some other things I want to highlight is, we chose this location because there's already industrial activity in this area. There's a compression station, it's called the Homewood Compressor Station. It's owned by N-Link. It was previously, I think, owned by Sabine Pipeline. This facility has 5,300 horsepower compression, and it's, it has the capability to move about 180 million standard cubic feet of gas. What we are proposing is to move 3%, the 3% of what they're doing with 1/10 of the horsepower. So, I think there's a misconception around compressor station, and, and I think there's a misunderstanding that we are bringing a facility that's a monster facility, we're actually bringing something that is much, much smaller than what's actually in, in the area currently. There's also some other activity in, in the area, our neighbors, the Henskens, they have some small industrial activity around their agriculture business, they have some rice farms, not rice farms, sorry, some rice silos, they store grain, I guess, and this, of course, they, they would need to, to truck that in and out, truck that away from that site as well, right? So, just about some other things I want to touch on. So, first of all, the proposed 10-acre rezoning site is already in a vicinity, activity across the road from significant larger compression facility. Noise levels from our compressor equipment will be minimal. Our, our compressor is actually enclosed in a sound attenuated enclosure. Our tractors don't ever pass in front of our neighbor's property. Our tractors don't ever pass in front of our neighbor's property. And I know there's some objections here as well that probably claim that trucks would go in front of their property. We've chosen a route that will minimize that. And just some benefits of the project, we intend to hire-
Mr. Maloney, that's time, sir.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is John Polarkowski. I am an attorney. My office is at nine oh one Lake Shore Drive, Suite nine hundred, a building owned by the parish. I was retained by Open One A Ranch, A One Ranch just last week. They approached me when they realized that there was a misunderstanding on the part of the project that they should have been here at the Planning and Zoning Committee to explain the project and give everybody an opportunity to ask questions. And as he's apologized for that, I won't repeat. So when they approached me, they know I handle development matters. I asked them first, well, where are you? And they told me. And I've asked Ms. Wallace to put this on the screen. Soren has already indicated where we are, but if you'll look, there is a compressor station directly across the street from the site. Five thousand horsepower, their output, their horsepower, far less. Look at the facility due north. That's the Kinder Morgan Gas Warming Facility. That's industrial. The site to the south that I just mentioned is industrial. The only landowner within probably a half a mile of this is Mr. Johnny Henskins. A fellow that went to school with my older brother Vic at Landry back in nineteen sixty-five. I spoke with him today. It was my first opportunity to do so. He and his son have COVID. And so one of the things I wanted to do is call him and tell him, look, we can defer this so you can be present at the meeting if you would like. And he told me that Mr. Gale will speak, Tom Gale will speak on his behalf. I said, great. But I just want you to know, we are transparent here. If you have concerns, let me know. I said, I understand you're opposed to the project. And he told me, no, sir, I'm not. I'm not opposed to the project. I'm not opposed to the project being in this area. I just don't want it next to my home. And so, Mr. Henskins, if you look at the map, the project, the, the people, the Gales own the acres around your home. In fact, your property was sold to you by their family. They own the property intervening between your home and the site. There's thirty-five acres. The site is ten. So there's a distance between the facility and their property. It's a little closer perhaps than, I'm not sure, than the EnLink facility you see to the south. So what's the nature of the property? Because that's what we're talking about, right? Is this facility compatible with the area? It's gas compression. It's gas warming. And then you have Mr. Henskins' property. Yes, it's agricultural, but as Soren indicated, it's not a hundred percent agricultural. It's also industrialized. He is drying rice there. Fine, that's perfectly understandable, but that's not growing crops. That's drying rice. And when you think about it philosophically, what Mr. Henskins is doing is really quite similar to what Sotaras is planning to do. He has raw product, his rice, that he's drying there to prepare it for sale to the public. What Sotaras is doing is taking gas from a pipeline that's been there for decades, probably longer than the Henskins have been there.
That's time.
And okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next we have Mr. David Stevenson. Or Stevens?
Mr. Stevens is here on behalf of Sotaras in case there are any questions.
I see. Thank you, sir. If there's, is there more time, Mr. Gab?
Actually, no. I, I, that's the time that the proponents had.
Thank you. Well, next we'll have Ms. Kimberly Albrecht. Mr. Gale, your name and address for the record, sir?
Yes, Tom Gale. Address is eight one seven two Highway three nine seven, Lake Charles. Yeah, that'll be fine. I, I'd ask to go ahead and Ms. Albrecht, just to kind of lay the foundation for it.
Yes, sir.
I'm here this afternoon on behalf of the Henskins who are under COVID. Mr. Henskins' oldest daughter, who lives at this home site, is going to speak right after that to Ms. Albrecht. And so she will be here in just a minute. I'm asking you today to uphold the vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was eight zero to turn this project down. They unanimously voted to turn the project down. And the reason being is because it's the project in the wrong place. And Ms. Wallace, if you don't mind, could you please click the zoning button on the map that he asked you to eliminate? And show us, is that permissible? Okay, okay, I'm sorry. If she had the ability, on the very top left- I don't know where it is, but if you go to the very top left and go down to the zoning button, we're gonna, nope, go all the way top?
One of the attachments has what I think Mr. Gale is asking for.
If you look at the zoning classification that we're talking about in this area, it's agriculture. It's all agriculture. Everywhere you look, it's agriculture. And the EnLink, the industrial site that's next to it, you didn't get to vote on that because that didn't require a zoning vote. That is not zoned industrial. It's agriculture. The pipeline station to the north of it, agriculture. So what happens is when the ag, when the pipelines came through, they create the pipeline corridor. That's the zoning classification. So all that green, that's ag. And that's the whole point. And I'm here to talk about two things. One, we're not opposed to the project. And they're probably, they're a great company. It's great for Calquishu Parish. It's a great thing. It's just in the wrong place. And it's a wrong place for two reasons. One, because it's in the Henskins backyard. You don't start within zoning industrial classification in the middle of an agriculture and work from your way inside out. Number two, it's the wrong place to do your planning. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recognized that, and they planted, voted eight to zero to do that. And the reason being is because you don't start with the lowest classification, drop a posted stamp in the middle of it of the highest zoning classification, and work your way inside out. You do it oppositely. You work from the outside, you transition, and you work your way in. So for two reasons, this is an inappropriate place for this spot. This has been the Henskins' home for seventy-five years. You're going to hear from Ms. Albrecht, Ms. Henskins, in just a moment. This is an agricultural community. Sunday afternoon, I had a combine cutting rice in my front yard. It is like that. And that's the nature of what's out there. That's what's there day to day. They've got cows. They've got rice fields. They've got horses across the field. And it's an agricultural community that, it's going to change someday. That, that, we all understand that. The only constant is change. What we ask is that we change in an orderly, logical way and do this in a planning and in a purposeful way, just like the Planning and Zoning Commission recognized. I'm going to ask you to please uphold the unanimous vote, and I'm going to reserve the rest of my time for Ms. Albrecht unless anybody has any questions.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Wes concerning the classification of what-
Okay.
When you, when you get a permit to build a rice dryer, what, what are you applying for? In, in what, what zoning?
Well, it could be, it's an A-one agricultural type use.
So it is, it is agricultural.
Yeah, that, that, those are, those are common and typical for agricultural type uses that we have in our area.
But the permitting is, is based under an agricultural-
They could be accessory structures, you know, or accessory things that are associated with the type of forming that you're doing on that property.
But the classification is A-one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Albrecht.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Henskins-Albrecht. I'm here representing my family, of course. They're all home with COVID. Dad and mom are both struggling, so please keep them in your prayers. My brother and my sister-in-law both have COVID as well as their kids. Four generations have lived there and have farmed there, going on five with my grandkids. This is not only where we farm, this is where we live. This is where I've lived my whole life, besides a couple of years, but, and these houses are on the site. Yes, they spoke about the rice dryers and the rice bins and so forth, but nobody spoke about homes. Our homes are there. And just like Tom said, if we are going to do this, let's do it the right way. Let's find a correct place to put this and not in our backyard, please. We've farmed there our whole life. My, my grandfather farmed, my dad farmed, my brother farmed. We farmed on that land. We farmed for A-One Ranch. So just, just asking to please keep that in consideration when, when talking about this and so forth, is that our homes are there. And we'll can, you know, we, we've been there our whole life. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have Mr. Mike Falk.
Three minutes, okay?
Please, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Michael Falk. I live at eighty seventy-six Wardline Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana, seven oh six oh seven. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. I've lived in the area for over thirty-five years. Our home is located within about a mile as far as the crow flies. The, I'm, I want to speak out against this because, as many of y'all know, in our area, and if you don't know, in our area, many of the residents rely solely on water wells for their water, their drinking water for everything. So we have the potential here to cause contamination to our drinking water. Not only that, but we have the possibility of contamination to the agricultural land and the food that we all consume. Maybe you don't live out there, but maybe you consume some of the food that's grown out there. Do you really want to risk getting contamination in the food that you eat? And I don't think any of y'all do. So not only that, but we have large issues, as many of the other people do, with drainage. And this is only going to amplify that. The roads are not built for this kind of traffic either. You don't have to be out there long to figure that out. Furthermore, besides these issues, we have, that we also are dealing with the, sorry, I lost my train of thought. The fact that this is in an AE flood zone. So you're going to take something that's industrial and allow it to possibly pollute the waterways around it. So I, I just, we, we've lived out here, I've lived out there for thirty-five years. I have two sons, young sons, that live out there. Stand up, boys. I mean, you look at them, they don't, they don't want this in their backyard. And I don't think any of y'all would as well. And furthermore, before you think I'm some kind of environmentalist or anything like that, I work for the oil and gas industry. And I fully dispute his claims that this is no different than the oil and gas industry. I can speak to the fact, based on that I grew up around agriculture and I work in the oil and gas industry. This is nothing like the oil and gas industry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Kevin Foreman. Do we have, is there a Kevin Foreman? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Kevin Foreman, eighty eighteen Wardline Road, seven oh six oh seven. We're new to the, the neighborhood. We just bought there. My family has been there for four generations, farmed in that area. To speak on the traffic and the, the rice dryers being, Mr. Henskins is drying rice for marketing. That has nothing to do with gas, the way they're trafficking this. There's called a farmer's rice mill down the road. That's how that works. We dry rice. I did farm. I farmed that land right there twenty years ago. You dry your rice, then you send it to a rice mill. We don't sell it. We don't pedal it from the rice dryer. So that's a total different deal. Other than that, the traffic in that area is not good. Right now, we're fighting Wardline Road. We've got people coming from Cameron, which is a gas, that, that comes from the gas plant they've built in Cameron Parish. Down there, it's a Venture Global. They come by there at eighty miles an hour. That's gas. That's, that's the gas plant. These people, EnLink, they have a plant in Ca, in Grand Cheneer. They can have that substation. They can pump from down there. There's no, there's no one around that plant. I've been down there and demoed, done some work, because I work in the oilfield too. I've done work down there. That'd be a prime place to put it down there on the Gulf Coast, away from everybody. Other than that, I think Mr. Gale, he touched base probably better than me. The, the rice, the combine cutting rice, that was my brother-in-law. And the horse and cows he's talking about is mine. So I, I, like I said, it's hard to follow this. Other than that, I ask y'all to decline it. Tell them to go somewhere else. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. I believe we have some questions from the jury. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Crane?
Yes, sir.
The, that compressor station that's across the street from this proposed site, that is also, obviously from the map, is also agriculture as well?
It is. We, we have a, well, in our ordinance, in agricultural areas, you're allowed to have a oil and gas pump transfer station. And so they could be transferring the, the gas from that location to somewhere else. And they could use compressors to do that. So that's something that we have typically allowed. I think the, the other side as well, on the northeast corner, is similar, similar nature to that. It could be a metering station.
This just doesn't fall under the ordinance.
Right. The, the, this, we classified this, since they're off-taking the, the fuel and then putting it on a truck and then delivering it to a customer as a wholesale distributor. And so under wholesale distributor, that, that requires a light industrial classification.
Next question, then. There's been some confusion. In fact, there was a flyer that went out, from what I understand, that said they were rezoning thirty-plus acres or what have you. How many acres are being rezoned? Is it ten or is it thirty or thirty-five or what is it?
It's ten. It's actually, the whole site was thirty-four point ten acres.
Well, I guess that's where that number came from, but that's not-
But the actual, the actual site that they're putting it this on, I think it's ten, ten acres is what they're putting it on.
Ten, okay. I think that answered, some of my questions got answered as the discussion went on. Mr. Hengens, we've spoken a couple of times, you know, since our last meeting. And he did call me this afternoon and said, as they said earlier, Mr. Gale was going to speak for him. And of course, Mr. Hengens is not in favor. He, he doesn't want this next to his house. And, you know, I was elected to represent Mr. Hengens and the people in that area, and so I'm going to make a motion to deny the zoning. I don't know if there's any more questions or what have you, but that's all I had, I think.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Brain.
I may come back to you.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Hayes.
I don't know if it's Mr. Crane or Mr. Gab or whoever, but at the end of the day, who is making money on this deal? Is it the landowner? Is it the corporate entity? Or both?
Mr. Hayes, we're, we're, we're here looking at, at use of land. I don't, I don't really get into who makes money and who loses money and, and those issues. I really don't know. I couldn't tell you.
I don't either. That's not what we're looking at.
All right. At the end of the same day? Oh, gotta do another day, all right. What is the alternative if their request is not granted tonight?
Alternative for the-
Do they come back at a different date with a different plan? Do they go somewhere else with their project?
Well, that's up to them. Our rule is they can't come back to you for another year for that piece of property with this request. What they do after this is anybody's guess.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Brain?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Wes?
Yes, sir.
Just to refresh my memory for clarification, did, what was staff's recommendation on this at the beginning?
We actually recommended to grant this one. And the reason we did that is, is you do have some facilities out there- And the reason we did that is you do have some facilities out there that are similar in nature, not zoning classification-wise, but similar in intensity of the use. And so, we felt like the way they presented their site plan to us, that it was not very intensive, and so, that's why we recommended.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Any other questions? Mr. Barris?
You had to know.
Sir?
Mr. Crane, the whole rezoning thing, that's so finite, you know what I mean? Why wouldn't they just ask for like an exception or a variance? You know, and I know that the company, or the landowner, I got an email, I know that they're not opposed to wording it such that this is the only thing that'll ever happen there. I mean, it's a, it was an explanation that I got this afternoon. I'm just wondering if there's like a, if the fact that it is zoned light eye, you know, going back from that is typically pretty hard. Going back down to A-1, I mean, you know, you don't, A-1, you always go up, and then, am I right, ish?
Well, I guess you could say that A-1 property has typically been our transition-type zoning property.
Right.
And so, it could transition either going to residential, or going to commercial, or going to industrial. And there is a wide variety of uses that are permissible on A-1 property. And that could be similar to, you know, that could have a lot of impact. Even a farming operation can have a lot of impact, depending on what you're farming. However, we're, when you say, why can't they, you know, just do an exception, or a variance, or something like that? Well, we classify this because of how they're using it, or the use of it, as a wholesale distributor. Well, under A-1, there is not listed under an exception or a variance to do wholesale distributorship. It has to be under light industrial. That is the classification for that type of use. So, I wouldn't say...
Is this one of those, just because it's always been that way type deals?
Well, it's in the ordinance.
I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to see if there's a middle ground. I live in Carlos. I used to live on a nice golf course. It's a neighborhood now. There's places all out there. I watched sulfur come to me. I watched all the plants, everything come my way, you know? I mean, it's just, and you know, there's farmers out there, cattlemen out there. I mean, this is just another, you know, this is just another Thursday to us. You know, and I just, I know it's, you know, really isolated out there, you know, right now, there's nothing out there, and, but I mean, also know that things change. I'm just trying to find a happy medium. You know, you guys can get some economic development, economic, what's that?
Revenue.
Revenue, something out that way. I mean, just, it's just, so, I, you know, I don't know. That's my question, is there a happy medium? If there's not, then, but I had to ask. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bean?
I had a question for the Zatoras representative. If he could come to the podium, Mr. President.
Mr. Maloney.
I know you looked at a number of different sites. Do you have any other key alternative sites, other than the one being proposed this evening?
To be honest, the answer to that question is no. We followed this pipeline very extensively. As I said before, one of the gentlemen said that we could go further south, and explained that as you go further south, the issues with actually getting to those locations, because there are a lot of weak infrastructure in those areas. The other reason why we really focused on this area, primarily because of the activity that is in that area.
Can you be more specific about activity in that area?
Yes, it is a compression facility. And usually, when you're looking for a location, you look, in our case, we would look for similar activity to set up next to, right? And we did that. And that's why we ended up with this location. Another thing is, these locations have been there for almost 15 years, both of them. The Homewood compressor station is also, also has provisions for collecting condensates and for taking that condensate out of that, out of that facility. We also looked on the opposite side of the facility, and it would have involved significant amount of disruption to EnLink and a significant amount of construction. We are not, we are not in the business of building pipelines. We connect to pipelines in as minimally intrusive way as possible. And I want to also add, we've requested 10 acres, but our facility is actually going to sit on about two or three acres, right? And we requested that 10 acres to give us a lot of room from our neighbors, but we, and if you look at the plan that I sent, it's about 5 by 500, which is about three acres. But we intend to keep a very tight footprint, so it's, and you can see, this is one of our facilities. You can see it's, a lot of that space is really just for turning trucks and so on, but it's, we have a very, very tight footprint. We would not be using the entire 10 acres. So, we would be in the furthest corner, way as far as possible from the Henskins. And I think a lot of that is being missed here, so I want, I really want to emphasize that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Burley?
Sir, if you will.
Mr. Maloney?
Mr. Maloney.
One more thing?
Yes, sir.
What is the average anticipated truck loads per day? And what's the exact route that they would be taking in and out of that facility?
So, we anticipate about six to eight trucks per day. I don't know if you can go back to a map which shows East Tank Farm Road. So, we would head, if you, at that intersection, we would actually go to the east of that, I think towards Wardline Road, I can't, East Ward Road, and then go north. Because if we, if we were to continue due north on Highway 397, we run into a lot of residences, right? And we don't want to do that. So, we would, we would keep our traffic towards the, towards the east, and then north on, I think it's East Ward Road to I-10. None of our trucks, we don't use any, I saw a question about jig bricks, we don't, we don't use any of that on any of our tractors. We don't do this. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Landry, you wanted to say one more thing?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I just want to clarify something to the jury, is, you know, earlier when I made my motion, I based that off of Mr. Hengins, which lives next door. I had other people that live in the district that's far, as well. I mean, I got calls on both sides. And honestly, from the same family, you know, because the Gale's own a lot of property out there. And so, yes, I got calls on both sides, and my decision was based off of Mr. Henskins, because he lived next door. But yeah, you know, it's a toss-up. I mean, there's definitely, you got phone calls and emails from both sides of the aisle there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There being no other discussion, we have a motion to deny by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Kathy?
Reverse, reverse, reverse?
Yes, to deny, right.
Yes, to deny.
A yes will be to deny, a no will be to approve.
Mr. Tremonti?
Yes.
Mr. Stelly?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Markentale?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Gillery?
No.
Mr. Burley?
No.
Vice President Brain?
Yes.
Mr. Barti?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
No.
And Mr. Andrew Pont? The motion to deny passed by a vote of 10 yays and 3 nays.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. Ms. Kathy?
You're welcome.
Moving on, item seven, take appropriate, no action is necessary, there are no renew, new or renewal applications. Move on item eight.
Thank you.
Item eight, consideration of approving payment on all current invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any rejection, objection, motion carries. I remind everyone to raise their hand for Mr. Brain. Item nine, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated July 1, 2021. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 10, consideration of adopting a resolution calling a special election to be held in Coppershy Parish on Saturday, November 13, 2021, to continue to levy and collect an existing tax of one and one-half mills for the purpose of operating, maintaining, and improving the Burton Coliseum. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? I'm sorry? Motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Barris. Thank you for your hand, sir. Any discussion?
You want to see my hand?
No, that's one finger. Any objections?
Age before beauty.
Motion carries. Item 11, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the purchase of property for the Farm Road multi-bridge replacement project.
Don't move.
Towards 2 and 8. I have a motion by Mr. Barti.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 12, consideration of adopting a resolution approving an amendment for the Hamreed Road extension project in Ward 3. I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Gillery. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 13, consideration of adopting a resolution approving an amendment for the I-10 North Frontage Road project in Ward 4. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 14, consideration of adopting a resolution approving an entity-state agreement for the Topsey Road sidewalk project. I have a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on 15.
Item 15, consideration of adopting resolutions approving the parish participation in the federal off-system bridge rehabilitation replacement program. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 16, consideration of adopting ordinances and/or amending existing ordinances for the following. A, establishing a 25 mile per hour speed limit and canceling the existing 30 mile per hour speed limit on Audubon Avenue in its entirety in Ward 4. Item B, establishing no-through trucks on First Street, Second Street, and Third Street in Ward 5. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont on all bullets and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 17, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting overlaying of various roads in Wards 1 and 8 as substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 18, consideration of adopting resolutions approving the following requests from the Human Services Department. A, approve a second amendment of the low-income home energy assistance program agreement. And B, approve a grant agreement for the Workforce Innovations and Opportunity Act Title I funding allocation. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Did I, okay. Item 19, take appropriate action on the following bids. A, drainage improvements of Miller Dish. The parish engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $1,265,650 of Merrick LLC be accepted. Item B, Public Works East and West Facilities Hurricane Repairs Project. Staff recommends rejecting all bids due to budgetary constraints and request permission to re-advertise for bids with a revised scope of work. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 20, take appropriate action on the terms of the following board, following members of boards and districts. A, Ward 4 Fire Protection District Number 4?
Don't move on A-1 and 2.
Move to reappoint Mr. John Sonnier and reappoint Mr. Joe McMillan. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Burley. Item B, Ward 7 Fire Protection District Number 1?
Move to appoint Mr.
I have a motion to appoint Mr. Justin Carrier by Mr. Barris.
So, move.
And a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Item C, Water Works District Number 9 of Ward 4?
Move to defer.
Have a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. Barris.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Item D, Workforce Development Board?
Move to defer, but I had a question.
Yes, sir.
We have been deferring this for like, for the last month, two months. Is there something strange going on with this particular appointment? I was just curious.
We're still waiting for a nominee to be submitted by the Vernon Parish Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
Mr. Tarek Polite is on top of it.
Gotcha. Okay, well, okay, just defer for 30 days.
I have a motion to defer by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Lewis. Item E, Lake Charles Harbor and Terminal District?
Move to nominate Mr. Lorenzi, Mr. Oakley, and Mr. Lewing.
Second.
I have a motion to nominate Mr. Lorenzi, Mr. Oakley, and Mr. Lewing by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain. Any objection on those items? Any discussion? Motion carries. Item 21 is September Board Advised Items. Item 22, advise that adjudicated property will be offered for sale by the Director of the Division in Planning and Development on Tuesday, September 28, 2021. Item 23, we, consideration of going into executive session to discuss prescription opioids litigation.
Don't move.
Before we adjourn for executive session, point of personal privilege by Mr. Andrew Pont.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I speak for my fellow Jaws when I say this, so just a special thank you to staff and the various departments and those, those folks that, everybody doesn't see it day-to-day, grass cutting, digging ditches, enforcement. But y'all really, every time, we all of us, as we call, y'all really work hard to accommodate the residents and taxpayers that contact us, and just want to say thank you to all of you.
Thank you, sir. I think we're feeling extra personal tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that through NICO, there were 17 vice chair appointments from the state of Louisiana, and we have five of those vice chair appointments that will bring back a lot of good information, so just wanted to pass it on.
Thank you, sir. Now, executive session.